We're all here.
Good evening and welcome to the Village of Austin zoning board of appeals regular meeting of October 12th, 2021. Now withstanding the provisions of Article seven of the public officer's law, to the contrary, this meeting is being conducted remotely in accordance with Chapter. Four one seven of the laws of 2021 in light of the public health and safety concerns associated with COVID-19 pandemic. There is no public participation in person tonight, rather, the public can watch the live meeting online through Zoom. Notice of tonight's meeting was published as required and posted on the villages website. The web notice included instructions for members of the public to access the meeting and participate in any public hearings. Comments will only be taken during the public hearing portions of the meeting as usual. In order to participate, please do the following, members of the public attending via. Online via the Zoom app may use the raise hand function. Or feature at the appropriate time if you would like to make a comment. The feature is located at the bottom of the screen. Those attending that via telephone can press star nine. The host will see that your hand is raised and or that you have pressed star nine. And will unmute those waiting one at a time so that you can speak. Lastly, comments can be emailed during the meeting to Jay Martinez, that's Jaime Martinez, J M A R. T I N E Z at village of Austin org. Any written comments will be read into the record. Please note that tonight's meeting is being recorded and a video and transcript will be provided at a later date. There are a couple of ground rules in order to keep this meeting orderly and ensure we get a clear recording. Please follow these ground rules. When you are given access to speak, please state your name and your address. If you are speaking during the public hearing, please limit your comments to the matter which is the subject of the hearing. To all board members, please mute yourselves when you are not speaking. Also to the board members, I will call on you one at a time to speak to avoid everyone speaking at once. If you wish to speak at any time when I am not calling on you, you may also use the raise hand function or literally just raise your hand. So I can see you and call on you. We will use roll call voting for purposes of all board motions, this is. This is to ensure that the record is clear. Thanks to everyone for their patience as we all navigate and negotiate this new way of doing things. Let us start with a roll call. With our roll call.
Would you like me to do that, Marlene?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, Marlene Cheeta.
Present.
Kyle Buckley.
Here.
George Bailing does not appear to be present, Bob Durayo.
Here.
Mark Garachni.
Here.
And we have planning director Jaime Martinez is here. We have the building inspector Joe Augustinelli. I'm here, the land use attorney for the village and we have our board trustees liaison Bob Fritsch. And not here is our is our board secretary Jamie Kane.
Is right, okay. So let us get started with our agenda for this evening. Continuing business of the board starts with 29 Birch Court. Carmen Davis is the owner, is there someone here to speak on that application?
Yeah. Steven Krachman and Carmen Davis here and there's a bunch of other people here, I'm not sure how many of them are here for your group.
Okay, sorry about that. Hello, everybody, this is Steven Krachman again and Carmen Davis is next to me. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, Marlene asked us for three things at the last meeting and we.
Will you go ahead, do you have any members of the attendee list that are here on half your?
Yes, I'm thank you very much Jaime, we have a Robin and Fred from my office, if you could invite them. Then we have the engineers, if you can invite them, Robin sent you a list, let me get their names.
I think it's Skip Francis.
I think Skip can't do it, but. Ryan is from from the same firm. Does that ring up, do you see that?
Ryan Farnham just here.
Yes, yeah.
Skip Francis is here.
Okay, great. There's Fred.
Hi, how are you?
And then there's S K A P C host, there's Gregory Hess.
Okay, yes, I have a lot of people, Steven, Gregory, Fred and Robin this time now. Who you probably all know but haven't never met.
Okay. And Gregory Hess.
Greg, are you back from your doctor's appointment?
And George Bailey is in the attendee list, I'll bring him over. All right. Great. Thank you. All right, I think this is everybody.
Before we get started, just Amanda, George is here so we can just. Make a note on the that for the attendance for tonight that George is present.
Yep, I've noted it, thank you.
Okay. Marlene, is it okay if I say what we're going to do and then get do it? Is that okay?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize I was muted, yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, at the last hearing. We heard. Many comments from neighbors and from you and we are, we have. Hello, 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 hello. Into consideration and we have. The comments were as follows, one, they would like to see some. Visualization, meaning some renderings of what the proposed. Garage would look like from the street and from different points of view and we have three or four or five visualizations to show you are we've already submitted, they be ready to show. The second thing is that we hired a Creighton. Creighton Manning, a local Austin firm to engineer the site drainage because neighbors were worried about drainage on the side in the back. And they've come up with a scheme which they're going to present. And then the third is that we we should, we we wanted to show you the as of right scheme. Which we can do without which which I represented is something we could do without. Without going through these hearings, but we think that we're we're going for a much better scheme, a harder to get scheme, but a much better scheme for the neighborhood. And for the client, so. I think I would like to do it in that order if that's okay with you, Marlene, are you okay with, do you have a special, do you care about the order or just get it done, right?
Yeah, and George, we can hear you, so can you on, can you mute?
Somebody's. Okay, Jaime, are we gonna run the, are we running this or you are or? Can Robin, can Robin run this thing or Robin or Gregory?
Do you have a screen you can share? Jaime.
You go, yes, you can go ahead and share your screen. I do have a second screen if you'd like me to pull it up.
Who's doing, one of you guys got to do this, get, go to the renderings first, okay?
Hello, anybody hear me?
George, we can hear you. Jaime, can we? Can we mute George or someone, you know?
Can you mute him from there?
Yeah.
Get in touch with him about his audio.
Robin, you doing it? Robin, you're on mute.
Yes, yeah, I'm just bringing up the.
Thanks.
Agenda packet on, yeah.
Yeah, go to the renderings first, okay?
Okay.
Please. Then we'll do Creighton stuff and then we'll do the add to rights scheme.
Okay.
Robin, I might do the as of right after the renderings, but let's let's just get the renderings. Are you having problems getting the screen share going or what?
No, I just pulling up the.
Can I ask while he's doing that if is Creighton Manning on?
Yes.
Can they talk about what they have proposed?
Well, it's, yes, they are, they're prepared to do it, I just wanted to show three pretty pictures before they do it because it'll help. Okay, here's, is that okay, Marlene?
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
I was just gonna, you know, trying to keep things moving, but.
Yeah, we're going now, sorry, it takes a while to get warmed up here. Okay, this is view one, I think we have three, four or five, this is looking from the driveway. At 29 Birch Court with, is there a pointer here, can I, can anybody see my arrow or Robin, do you know how to pointer? Can you point that thing? Can you draw on that? So this this shows the attached rendered carport with the three columns, the columns, yeah, thank you very much. So you can see how the roof is blended in to the existing garage, just to show that. And then there's three columns that match the columns. On the porch and their architecture and materials are meant to look the same and original, okay, the next view. Please. We move out a little bit and then we move to the side and then we move closer next. So now this is looking up the driveway, take that red circle off, thanks. So again, it's the same rendering, a show where the where existing and new is Robin with a red line, like a vertical line to show existing and new. No, sorry, no, sorry, sorry. Right, okay, so that's the proposed carport with the roof and the columns and the you can see in the background. Much smaller, the shed that's already there and you can't really see the pergola here, okay, next. And this is from 31 Birch, the neighbors Elaine's house and you can now see. A more oblique or more orthogonal view straight, straight on looking at the garage, you can see through or underneath the carport. And you can see the the pergola in the background and the. And the shed next, is this the rendered view, is this rendered, okay, a little, a little up close?
Oh shit.
Yeah, we have, we're showing some landscaping. The fence that's there runs across the back and the pergola showing a, you know, a year or two's worth of. Of of growth and vines. And then you can see the underside of the of the pergola, you can see a little more articulation on the columns, the columns are Doric. With a with a with a base and the heights are matched the porches around, we're trying to make it look like it was original. Anything else, next, next?
Uh huh, Stephen mentioned the the pergola and the background is is. Not painted white, but it's a darker.
That's a good one, yeah, the client, the client wanted and. And prior to in during the design process wanted a dark, dark painted pergola. And it turns out that is the best way to make it recede the most, if it were painted white, it would like pop out a little bit more, so. It doesn't seem to be, it looks a little natural there, but it's intended to be gray and of the sort of match the palette of the of the building. Okay, can we show that the as of right scheme, the left and right? Robin, please, and then we'll go to Creighton Manning to talk about the.
Hello. Oh, you can? Oh, okay, because I couldn't, I couldn't hear anything, I don't, you can hear me, but I can't.
Is this it, okay, um, okay, we're showing side by side on the left. Is. The carport that we can do as of right that shows, can you zoom in on that, Robin, please, and show the the dimension? The as of right scheme would require six columns, but each one, the as of right would still be. Five foot setback from the side yard. The left, can you move to the left there, it's a little. Yeah, left, thank you very much, thanks. Okay, so the as of right scheme shows six columns. It's, you know, more or less the same size. But the actual size for the car is a little less by maybe 18 inches, has six columns, it's freestanding. And the roof shapes would not be what you we just showed you, they would be a gable or a or some other shape. And it would look kind of separate from the building, which we're very much against doing. We want, we wanted to look compact and part of the building, so go to the right side. That's the as of right one. It still has the same five foot setback. But it has three columns, a little more space for the car, but the the roof, the roof scheme integrates into the existing. Okay, so that those are those two, I assume that I'm sure that the rest of the board and others will have comments, but let's go to Creighton Manning now. Who the client has hired to do drainage, site drainage engineering, they made a full report. They, I don't want them to go into full detail, but I'd like them to take it over now, Ryan or Skip, whoever is doing this, take it, take it away, please. Tell us what you've done, what your, what you were asked to do and what your solutions are, please.
All right, thank you, Stephen, my name is Ryan Farnham with Creighton Manning Engineering. And we we did the drainage analysis for the site. So what we were asked to do is kind of evaluate the existing drainage patterns, figure out where the flow is going. And then figure a solution to not increase runoff onto the adjacent properties. So for this project, we went ahead and. Designed it for the 10 year storm. And we were, the site itself kind of drains into three different directions. It drains to the east towards their conservation easement, the property owner to the east. It drains to the neighbor, the immediate neighbor to the south, 31 Birch Court. And then it also drains onto Birch Court itself to the west. And so. What we found is that. This proposed project of pavers and a driveway extension would increase runoff as expected. Anytime you increase impervious area on a project, you're going to get more runoff. So the goal was to figure out how to reduce that runoff onto the neighboring properties. So, hey, Rob, can you go to the drainage plan? Yeah. And then zoom in on that.
The left, the left side, Ryan?
Yeah, the left side there, that way we can see, so we came up with this, a series of three. Three directions that the contractors should take to reduce the runoff onto the neighboring properties. The first one was along the driveway extension was to.
Ryan, Ryan, if, is it okay if I ask Robin to give you some red, you know, to do the highlights?
Yeah, go for it.
Yeah.
So the first thing is the along the driveway extension, so you can kind of see in this figure. Where they're proposing to extend the driveway in front of the carport. And we are suggesting that. They install a six inch asphalt wedge curve off on the side. That way, all the runoff from the driveway does not go directly onto 31 Birch Court's driveway. As you can see from those renderings that that grassy area between the two properties. Just goes right into their driveway, so this wedge curve would redirect that flow down onto Birch Court Road. So that's where it, some of the driveway currently goes and this would just take all of it and direct it that way onto the road. The, the second solution was to up on the pavers under the pergola. Was to suggest grading them inwardly, so. The the high point of the backyard is kind of right in the middle, so if you were to let it, the existing flow pattern, you get runoff going off, as you look at this view to the right. And so the goal would be to everywhere there's pavers is to to grade them inwardly, that way, all that increased runoff. Goes towards the center of the property rather than off the property right there. And. It would ultimately lead to what we're proposing is a dry well at them. On the east side of their pergola, so that dry well with a. Great inlet will capture all that runoff from the the pavers. Also, anything else in that backyard area? As long, as well as the rooftop of the shed or half the rooftop of the shed, so that then leaves one extra area. Everything that is going directly to the south behind the shed. And so we're proposing a French drain behind there that that goes. Just a few inches deep, will run along the between the shed and the property line. The goal is to capture any runoff that doesn't, that comes from the shed. As well as any that comes from the pavers, to try to capture that increased runoff and redirect it into the dry well.
Yes.
And so the the goal, the the French drain and the dry well together. Is to. Capture that runoff immediately and kind of store it in the dry well. We also evaluated the soils. They are considered to be well drained soils with hydrologic soil group B, which have good infiltration rates and are good candidates for dry wells. And so. With that dry well, it'll store the water during the rainfall event and then slowly infiltrate out. As it fills up. And so with those three solutions. Our our modeling indicated that. Towards the east, towards that conservation easement, the runoff would be expected to be reduced point zero one CFS. The runoff to 31 Birch Court would be reduced point zero five CFS. And then the runoff onto Birch Court itself, the road would be increased point zero five CFS, so. The dry well and the French drain reduce the runoff. And then the the wedge curb kind of redirects. That already existing runoff, so.
Ryan, can I ask you a question, it's Steven speaking, I want to bring out a couple of points that I heard you mention and read in your report, I just, you glossed over it, but I want to. Ask you this, if if it's not true anymore, then you know, just to say whatever's.
All right, go for it.
So I want to know in a, in a residential property like this is preexisting, what triggers site engineering? I think you said that there's a certain amount of. Impermeable. Area that's when when proposed triggers is is a threshold that it triggers engineering, what is that number and what are we at?
Correct, so there's two different thresholds for drainage design. One is through the state where you have more than an acre. We are considered less than that. And then the other is the amount of impervious area. Let me pull that number real quick for you. Where it's just measuring the amount of impervious area on your site compared to the entire lot. And.
Are you trying to pull something up or?
Yeah, I was trying to look up, sorry, the load up the front page of yours.
Robin, can you help Ryan or? Thank you.
Yeah, where you guys went through the calculations of impervious area, it stayed below that threshold, I don't, I don't have the exact number, but you were right, number below it.
Okay, so are you saying, sorry, sorry to sound like a lawyer, but are you saying that? Are you saying that we, did we need engineering? By law to to do this, or could we have just done this as architects and as home and homeowners?
So, so I'm not a lawyer either, but from my understanding is. What is being concerned is not the design of the drainage, so the the storm event or the amount of runoff you need. It's about impacting adjacent properties and so. We chose the 10 10 year design storm and saw the reduction of adjacent neighboring runoff. But there is no threshold to meet those designs, the goal of the drainage design is to. Not adversely impact your neighbors by increasing runoff directly onto their property, so that's our understanding of what is required. But there is no value threshold that has to be met by this project.
Okay, I I guess Amanda would help us and I'm out of my league here, but I, so my question really isn't valid, it sounds like. That magic word impact, if there's any impact and the and the board wants to see the impact, then you have to deal with it, no matter what the numbers are, okay.
Are you, are you asking me a question?
Yeah, kind of, did we need engineering, Amanda, or not?
Well, you're. By law, I don't know that engineering was required, but it seems that you've proposed engineering in response to comments, so. This engineering is voluntarily being proposed.
Yes.
And I don't want to get ahead of myself, but I'm sure that the chair is going to request. Since this board is not the planning board and is not normally accustomed to review, to reviewing engineering. Analyses, I'm sure this board is going to want the village's engineering consultants to take a look at Creighton Mannings. What they've prepared and advise the board accordingly, is that right, Marlene?
That is correct, Amanda, that I was just writing notes to myself to ask that question if this could be. If this, if if the village engineer could actually look at at their proposal and at least get back to us with, you know, their take on. On on what they're proposing. And you know, how they feel it would impact, because again, the impact is on the neighbors. And also you're, you're also saying that you're redirecting water down into the street, which. I think was, you know, something that I would like the engineers to come back with and and kind of give us some, some idea of what's going on with it.
Yeah, I think that's certainly reasonable, you want to make sure that what they're proposing is going to be effective. So at the end of the day, even if no state or, you know, local thresholds are being met, we want to make sure that. This is going to get the job done and it's not going to cause any adverse impact.
Okay, I I think that was, those are the three points that we understood we needed to meet and that's what we're trying to deliver and I think unless. Ryan wants to say some more, I think we're, this is, this is the kind of the end of our, our part of the presentation.
Can we, can we stop at that picture for a second or one of those pictures? I'd, I'd like to ask a question to whoever would like to answer. In looking at this, at this picture between. This, your house and I think it's 31 is next door. Is there any way and maybe we should, I don't know if this has to go to the Board of Architectural Review or if we're looking at, because it really doesn't fall into the zoning, but. Maybe something different to put up a screening or plans or something that would also help capture some. To make it look more aesthetic and to also help with some of the drainage issues, but that was just a question that. Came to me in looking at pictures and what was going on, you know, little hedges, something that would. Help with the overall. You know, because it, because I, I mean, in looking at pictures, the way it's pitched, it's like going right into your neighbor's driveway, so.
Marlene, I don't know if you can see it, but there already is a screen of landscaping to. Just to block out the shed. And there's already landscaping shown on. And there's already landscaping shown on the pergola, which is already planned. But if you're Robert, uh, if you're asking for landscaping along the um side of the road. Uh, sorry, the the driveway. Um, that's that's not, that's not proposed at this point.
Okay, thank you. Um, if there is nothing else um from Mister uh uh from uh Mister Krachman. Um, then um I would ask if there's anything from the board, any um comments from the board before we open it up for or before we reopen the public hearing, because I believe that we adjourned it at the last meeting.
Right.
Um, Kyle, I see your hand is raised.
Oh, yes, thanks, Marlene. Uh, so I just wanted clarify to make sure I'm understanding, although New York State law does not require these uh mediation efforts. The board can stipulate an approval based on the condition of these remedial um water drainage um efforts. Because they were issues that were brought up during the process and they're not kind of off and left field. Is that correct?
You want me to answer that?
Uh, yes, please. Thanks, Amanda.
Yeah, so um there's definitely provision in the code and you have the discretion to attach such conditions and safeguards as may be required in order that the result of your action may be as nearly as possible in accordance with the spirit and intent of the zoning chapter as possible. That's me reading directly from um two seventy dash forty eight Powers and Duties, so. Um, I think it's reasonable, um if there are legitimate concerns about drainage, for instance, for this to be coming up and to be addressed uh by by like design professionals, by engineering professionals, which is why I feel like it's a good idea for the villages consulting engineer to take a look and and um, you know, give their views on the plans accordingly to you. And yes, I think it's an appropriate condition if it's, like I said, a legitimate concern that would have impacts, you know.
Great, thank you. And I'm asking in part for me, but more so for the record and for the people who had joined. Uh, because another thing I noticed was that pre- in the previous meeting, we had already stipulated that if and when plans were provided, we would ask them to be reviewed by the village in advance, uh because we are not qualified to make that determination without their guidance, so. For bringing that up.
Yeah, so it just turns out they've already provided, you know, the plans to you and we can we can do that now rather than than later.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the board?
Joe, not cheat him. I would, I do have just one question I can ask, yes.
Go ahead, Joe.
Now that it's been established that what you're doing is you're going to have the carport attached to the house. It's understood that the setbacks would be um based off of the main structure where in this district you have a twenty foot side yard setback and you're proposing five. So what you're requesting, if I'm correct, is a variance for one side yard for fifteen feet. And I believe you're also asking for both side yard variance, um but when we looked at your um zoning worksheet, it doesn't seem to indicate that, so we'd like to get that clarified today that you were requesting from this board. Um, a side yard variance and a bolt side yard variance. And um I would believe you'd have to correct your worksheet, because what's indicated on that does not indicate a request for those two variants.
Can I respond to that?
Sure, that's 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 addressed to you.
Yeah. I I suggest that um we we find that the assending this, this, we find that this worksheet is troublesome and 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 very hard to follow. And um we have done our best to do it. We do this all the time with many uh places and I I don't really think, it's a very technical discussion and we, I mean, it is what it is, whatever we're asking for. And if we filled it out wrong, we'll we'll change it. We have no problem, but I'm I'm not prepared to talk about we're not happy with the questions that were asked in this book, in this sheet and we we think it's very hard to answer. We think there should be two or three other questions and we think there's a difference between a side yard and a and a setback and we we, I don't think that this is appropriate to, this is a very technical thing and I'd rather just talk about it offline and if we made mistakes, we were very happy to change it back. And we just need a little bit of coaching on how you want us to make it read. And I, we didn't mean to, um, we're not trying to be dishonest or um say something that we're not trying to do. If you look at the previous one, we had an another series of dimensions. Uh, and we're we're a little confused and I don't, but I just don't, we've asked for help before. I just don't think this is the right time to do it and I'm, I take, I I thank you very much for bringing that up and I would love to uh get it straight, okay, and and ask for whatever we're asking.
Mister Krachman, I I would. So, I, you know. We needed to have this conversation. Do you mind, I I, uh, you want me to follow up with them later?
So I I would suggest that um Mister Krachman, you you meet with um Jaime and Joe and work out the zoning sheet.
No problem.
I'm also uh um if Jaime, is there anyone on that um to that would like to speak in the audience on behalf of this um application?
Yeah, there there are. There's definitely several people here that sent in a letter.
So the letters, the letters are online. Um, the letters prior have been read into the meeting minutes um from the last meeting, so if anyone would like to speak to add in anything different or say anything different, I think this is the time to do that, but what has already been said in the past meeting is still um part of the record.
Do we need to reopen the public meeting with a motion?
No, the public meeting was adjourned. It was not closed.
So we need, okay, got it.
So you can move to reopen.
So, yeah.
I moved to reopen the public me- hearing.
I second that, Kyle.
You could get an email today, uh, an email comment that didn't make it onto the website, uh, because it didn't come in until later today. Um, if you'd like, I can read that email. It does seem to refer a lot to the uh engineers um details.
Um, there's there's a motion on the floor to reopen the public hearing. Um, and just for uh brevity, um all those in favor from the board, that's okay, Amanda?
You want to do it by unanimous consent? You can just say if, you know.
Okay, so if there's no um objection, then the um public hearing um will be um
reopened.
reopened at this time.
Yep.
No objection, um, public hearing is reopened.
Good.
Okay, I'm sorry, I mean, you said that there's an email that needs to be read in.
Uh, yeah, I am trying to find that email. Here. It came from Elaine uh Graziano. It's a letter written by David Toriano who is on this call and is engineer. Um, I can, I'm gonna just pull it up real fast and then.
And that email came in today?
Uh, yeah, I mean, at three o'clock. So it says uh, dear Mrs. Kane, or dear Ms. Kane, I'm writing on behalf of Ms. Elaine Graziano, thirty one Birch Court, who resides and owns the home directly adjacent. And to the right of the above referenced premises, Ms. Graziano is highly impacted by the construction proposed at twenty nine Birch Court. Please excuse the timeliness of this letter as most of the pertinent submission information was delayed and not available until early last week. There are a number of questions and concerns with the structure as currently proposed and potential detriment to thirty one Birch Court property as follows. Number one, with regard to the September twenty seven, twenty twenty one letter from Stephen Fratchman, architect TC, please have the architect explain the request made in the fifth paragraph of his letter requesting confirmation of the site plan diagrams. I do not believe this confirmation is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Appeal. Uh, number two, note that row five of the zoning worksheet, one side yard is not accurate. Setback stated, no change noted contradicts the setback noted in the site plan five feet. This application should not be heard based upon this error. Number three, note that row six of the zoning worksheet, both side yards is not accurate. The setback, no change noted contradicts the setback noted in site plan nineteen point five feet. This application should not be heard based upon its error. Number four, watershed mapping does not indicate flow paths for the determination of the time of concentration to the subsurface stormwater uh system. Design engineer you to utilize direct entry of five minutes for all watersheds. This is not considered an accurate method for determining TC, which is a critical component of any hydraulic analysis. Five, no deep hole testing or percolation testing data is contained within the report. Deep hole testing is required to determine the subsurface soil conditions, such as presence of ledge rock and depth to groundwater. Percolation testing is also required to determine the absorbidity of the soil. Number six, no description of the proposed subsurface system is included. Additionally, the hydrocan model does not include the routing of the stormwater runoff through the proposed subsurfaces. Therefore, the calculations presented are incomplete. Number seven, the runoff from the carport roof area is to be directed to the existing house system. Yet no location of the system is shown nor is the type of the system described. Additionally, no engineering plans of the system nor calculations are submitted. Proving the existing system is capable of accepting additional runoff. Eight, the asphalt wedge suggested on along the south side of the driveway may not last a winter flower. Stone or concrete curbing is more durable and should be utilized. Uh, I look forward to presenting these items respectfully. David Toriano, professional engineer. So the other items are all uh on the, as you mentioned, Marlene, on, so if you want, I can start bringing in people with their address.
Yes, um, I see Robert Tarnas.
Yes.
Um, I don't, he put a message in the chat that he has his uh comment.
Okay. Uh, we do see his hand raised, so. Remona?
Okay.
Robert Tarnas. Uh, you're uh in attending now, so you are panelists now, so you can speak, Mr. Tarnas.
Mister Tarnas? Unmute, okay, there you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Yes. Um, so I just wanted to say, I I live uh across the street and when I saw the construction, I was of course concerned about uh the aesthetics. I'm not qualified to speak about any of the engineering. Uh, but I was uh, I was quite relieved to see that uh they had made efforts to maintain what I'll call an architectural harmony with the existing uh architecture to make it look uh like it was built originally. Um, I was concerned that there would just be a a separate uh structure, which I think would uh would be less attractive. So uh from my perspective, this is uh this is favorable. Uh, because as as I go walk up and down the street and seeing something like that, I think would be appealing. Again, I can't speak about any of the other engineering issues.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, Jaime, is there anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of this project?
There is two more people.
Okay.
Uh, Frank Levaglia. Yes, hi, you, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks. Uh, thanks, board, for giving me the opportunity to speak. And I want to make sure it's clarified. I did send in a letter, but subsequent to the first meeting, so I want to make sure that's part of the record. And and if so, I don't have to go through through everything, uh, so I want to clarify that.
It is, yes, it's it's only a deck.
Okay. All right, thanks. So the letter speaks for itself. Uh, again, Frank Levaglia from uh Levin Birch Court. So I won't go through the the points on that letter, but just to emphasize that the applicant uh on on all factors here just fails to satisfy its burden uh for the granting of a variance. I mean, um, it's beyond anything reasonable to 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 request a a five foot setback for something that requires twenty feet. And to address the aesthetics on this, I I I would like to just say, we're talking about a carport. A carport is a carport. We can dress that up. And I guess if you have another neighbor on Port Birch Court um that wants to put up a carport that doesn't have the the aesthetics that uh this graphics does, well, that's the issue here. Again, we're talking about a carport in the cul-de-sac. And and that's an issue. And just briefly, I'd like to address the issue of the carport structure as an as-of-right structure. And I I I really would find it amazing if the code permits that. It's an absurd result um to to simply detach it from the structure, still come within five feet from the neighboring property and be within code. And if that's so, we have a problem with the village code and that needs to be that needs to be remedied and it's just an exploitation of a loophole and loophole in the code. Uh, same absurd result. So those are the two issues I want to talk about and um again, the the letter, letter sets it out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, is there anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of um on this application?
Uh, yes, we have Elaine Graziano.
Hello, Ms. Graziano. Okay, is she on? Hi, Ms. Graziano, how are you? Um, please unmute.
Hi, uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, and please give us your address, your name and address.
Uh, I'm Elaine Graziano. I live at thirty one Birch Court, which is the house right next to this property. Um, so I just wanted to ask, uh, on the, there's this picture that they're showing that's currently on the screen and there were a couple of others from further down in the street. Um, I was wondering, I do see on this one, I didn't see on the other one, if it's possible to redline the property line to show um where the the structure, like the posts are i- in in regard to my property line. I don't know if that can be done.
Um, this picture does have the property line drawn. Okay.
Okay, so that that right pillar or post is is only five feet from the property line. Am I correct and and?
Joe, can you confirm that? I think that the overhang, the corner of the overhang is five feet from the property.
Property line, right.
Is it or is it the post? Because I was on the understanding that it was the post.
So, uh, do you mind confirming that? We we spoke with the um the applicant about this specific issue, but I think Amanda is stating it correctly.
Can we get it on the on the drawing from the from the street, like from further back?
Yeah, the question is, it, I think better better asked is is the post five feet from the house or is the corner of the overhang five feet from the house, from the property line?
Based on the site plan, based on the site plan that they're providing, just saying five feet. Uh, I'm guessing they're saying it's the overhang. I mean, I think they
The post. It's the post.
It's the post and okay, but, okay, then you got the answer. It's the post.
So so then I guess that begs the question, are we measuring from the the post or the overhang? Because if the overhang is another foot or more, does that make a difference? And what would we be looking at if we were looking at the zoning worksheet?
Can I answer? Do I do want to hear the answer or should I just wait?
I think we would like Joe to answer.
I would like Joe to answer.
I mean, it it doesn't, it doesn't exempt the overhang, so the old, it it has to be presented as the the roof structure and what is that setback off the property and that's what has to be proposed. Um, on the worksheet, how, what what they're proposing and what the setback, it has to be basically from that roof structure, not from the post. So so if they say it's five feet from the post, then I I would I would say then what they're proposing is a setback is that additional overhang there, which is that that. which is that, that soffit or that, that roof structure. So it may be uh, four feet, three feet, they have, they have to tell us what they're proposing.
Yeah, cause I, I mean, from the rendering, the, the posts seem to be in underneath the, um, the overhang of the roof. So that, that, I think that was the question.
Yeah, that's what it is. And if, if, if the applicant is saying that that's the, that's where they're measuring the setback or what they're proposing is the post, then they, they have to give us what the dimension is from that roof structure. So if that, if the post is five feet, I'm assuming the roof structure is going to be less four or three feet, whatever they're proposing, that additional, that additional, uh, footing of that. How many, how many feet are we talking about of, of that overhang of the roof?
Okay, um, I see Kyle, you have a, a question. Miss, I'm sorry, Ms. Graziano, was there anything else you wanted to add?
Yes, yes. Um, so can, can they do, can they run line the, the other view, the one from the street? But I think the other one didn't, yeah, can you run the red line of the property line, like where that, where that is for my property line? Okay.
Elaine's, Elaine's driveway is not legal, by the way. It's closer to the property line than it's allowed to be.
Okay, um, so I, I just, I'm just going to say one thing and then I would like to, David Toriano, who submitted the letter, the engineer who's addressing the, uh, the engineering report with the water drainage would like to speak. I, I don't know whether he's, he's here, he's on. I don't know if his hand is up or not. But I just, Frank LaValia brought this up already, so not to be redundant, but I guess what I'm saying is if, if the, if our neighborhood or the village has a twenty-foot setback for a property, it, I mean, it's there for a reason. And if you're asking for a variance for a few inches or a foot or a couple of feet to, to build something that's, that's going over the variance by a little bit, that's one thing. But I, I just honestly can't understand how it's okay if, if you have a twenty-foot setback to then, because you want a carport to put in additional car in to bring that to five feet from the property line. I mean, the twenty-foot guideline is there for a reason and to, and to reduce that by fifteen feet, not five feet, bringing, you know, but going from twenty feet to five feet, you're asking for a fifteen-foot reduction in the setback. I just, I, I, I don't understand how that's okay to bring structures that close to a property line. They're already close as it is, our houses are, are close as it is, and to come that much closer is just, it just, it just feels like there's buildings and structures right on top of each other. So I, I, that's, that's, that's my main concern, that and the water drainage, which I would like to really turn it over to David. He's an engineer. I really don't, um, have any input on the drainage, but it's a huge concern to me because I'm, I'm downhill from this property. Um, and I did send in a couple of pictures. I don't know if they got it, trying to get a better view of, of the, um, the slope, the, the level of the slope from their yard to mine. Um, so I don't know if, if you receive those and I don't know if they accurately portray it, but you know, it does come downhill to my property and I don't want problems, water problems on my property.
That's so, and to, to piggyback on what you've said and, and some of the things that the zoning board has asked for is to look for an engineering study as to it, look for the engineer from the village to actually look at the engineering study that was done and come back to us with, um, their perspective as to what's going on. We will actually, you know, um, the, um, building department will actually look at the plans again, along with Jaime to decide where the five-foot actually starts so that we have a better understanding on that piece of it. And so, you know, we thank you for your comments, but, and we hear what you had, you know, so we're, we're taking into account everything that you have just said. Kyle, I see your hand is up. Um, would you, you know, do you want to add in?
Yes, before we move on to the water issue, again, I just want to wrap up something with the two questions. One's for Joe and one is an observation. I'm going to share my screen. So Joe, is the requirement twenty feet or is that side yard and is the, is the setback only five feet requirement?
No, it, it, the zoning code, if it's the main structure, if the house itself is going to have a twenty-foot setback, so if the carport is attached to the main structure, it becomes part of the structure and then it's subject to a twenty-foot setback. Accessory structures in our code say that you have to have a five-foot setback from property lines and accessory structures can only be put in the side yard or rear yard.
Uh, great. So now that moves me on my next thing. I'm going to share my screen really quick. Oh. Can I get permission?
Yeah, you need to, yeah, okay.
Great. All right. So this was the, the rendering that was provided, um, previously, although this is the October first one that was in our packet. So looking at this, it very, very clearly shows that the five-foot setback touches the corner of the roof. And if that's not the case, then it overhangs over the five-foot setback, which, um, is not accurate. So my question is for Stephen. Stephen, does this represent the roof or only the part of the ground that things touch?
It, it represents only the structure, which is the column. You're allowed to project a roof into the setback of a certain dimension, and that's why we're doing that. We're, I, I want to, but you guys have to, you guys are saying a lot of things that are not, are, there's a misunderstanding about this property and all the properties in the subdivision. The subdivision was applied for in two thousand and three. And there's not a single house or property that meets the current zoning. There's no twenty-foot setbacks and there's no twenty-five-foot setbacks, which is code. Uh, zoning, I should say, none, none of the buildings, not thirty-one, not twenty-nine, none of them, eleven. Nobody meets current zoning. Some, the previous applicant who did the subdivision was approved to, um, have non-conforming dimensions and we've inherited those. So we're not starting with twenties and twenties, we're starting with sixteens and nines. And, um,
But that, okay, so, um, before you go further into that, because that, that is a village-wide issue and not just for Birch Court. And I don't think we need to walk down that road. Every applicant is taken at, on the merit of where they stand within the code as it stands today, not what happened in the past. And Amanda, you can, you know, piggyback on that, you know, to, to that light if you'd like. So I hear what you're saying, but if the code says this today, then we have to go by where we are today. And we also look at, you know, the existing, and that's why it says, what is the existing condition? We understand the existing condition is at whatever number that is and what the changes you are asking for, but you're asking to go from a requirement, which is twenty feet to down to five feet, which is a different, which is a look for us. So even if it was sixteen feet and you were going down to five feet, we'd still have to look at it. So that's, I think that that's the, that, so on the baseline, there's still a question. And, and I'm also going to go piggyback back to what we've been saying all along, that we'd really like to see what the village engineer has to say. And we'd also like to know where you're putting, like where that five-foot set that starts. I think it's important for us to know that when we're even talking about looking at where we're going to move forward with this. So that's, that's my take on it. Um, if there's anyone else who would, um,
Oh, I don't know if I'm still, if you could still hear me, but, um, I don't know if you see David Toriano. I believe his hand is up because he would like to speak, um, regarding the, the drainage issues.
Yes, I'll, I'll ask Jaime.
I just jumped in here real quick. I, I'd like to remind all of the board members that if you send a message to all panelists, it goes to every panelist and the panelists include all of the people who are, um, you know, asking questions and all the people who are presenting on this topic right now. So I'm not sure.
I meant that to be the case.
Okay.
For those questions.
Um, so if you like, I can, if you want me to read out Kyle's question and then answer it.
You may.
I'm asking for other people's edification because there's people who may not understand.
No, I, right, so that's, that's, Amanda's going to read the question and then answer the question, Kyle.
All right, so Kyle asked in the chat, you have a variance for a prior subdivision and then you make a change to the existing condition that was previously approved, you are held to the new standards, correct? And he said, I believe that's New York State law and Austining code based on the training for land use he just took. So, I mean, we are making an assumption there that they even got a variance for the prior subdivision based on the fact that the lots are non-conforming. Assuming that's the case, yes, if you're making a change, that's, you know, reducing the setbacks to something that's even less than what's existing, yes, you need a variance for that.
And again, as I stated before, that is throughout the village of Osning, there are, you know, lot lines in every, I don't, I don't know what corner you can't go to that there's, you know, somebody comes before us and they always need a variance for something that they're doing. So, um.
Yeah, I, I, I just want to kind of add to this point because I think it's, it's, it's a little confusing, I think, to, to the general public and, and to me as well. So the, the rules around the house pretty well defined by Joe earlier, but if you have a house, essentially it's the house that the primary structure, anything that's attached to the primary structure is built to the primary structure, is the primary structure. Even if, you know, the use of it in your mind might be sort of like an accessories. So carport is either part of the primary structure because it's attached to the primary structure or it's an accessory structure because it's no longer attached to the primary structure. As the only thing that, if, you know, that separates those two uses, it's whether it's attached to the house or not attached to the house. And when the code is making the determination about how to treat it and i- it deals with setbacks for accessory structures, which are for the whole village, and then there are setbacks for that specific zone. Or even if that, if that setback was set because of a variance, right? So in this instance, it allowed these houses to be built on non-conforming lots where even though they don't meet the twenty-foot or the twenty-five-foot or the thirty-foot, they, they still have to adhere to the, the accessory one or whatever was allowed before that allowed them to come in. So they don't have some extra room that they could use. They still have to get that variance every time. But the difference between what they're required to meet, the code that they're required to meet is based off of a few different conditions, right? And so for an accessory structure, if you want to build an accessory structure, it's not attached to the house, you only have to meet the five-foot threshold. If you want to pave your yard, um, then, you know, as long as you stay under like the threshold, the thirty-five percent threshold of this or the forty percent threshold in other districts, right, then, then you're allowed to do that, um, without having to go and get a new site plan or a new variance and things of that nature. And so I think that, that, that's the part that gets a little confusing here. They've presented a couple of things, what they could do without getting a variance and, and, and.
So if they have an, an attached structure, they have to meet twenty feet or get a variance for that, fifteen feet.
Correct.
Great. That was the question that Elaine was asking.
Yeah, Marlene and Jaime, do we have anyone else here from the public? Because we're getting, we're spending a lot of time here.
Is there anyone else from the public? And I know that, um, Elaine, Ms. Graziano said that there was an engineer, but I don't want a full engineering report, so, um, I'd like the village engineer to give us that. So, um, if there is someone else that would like to speak.
Uh, there is a David Toriano. It is now here.
David Toriano here, and I do have on non-engineering items I would like to discuss on behalf of Ms. Graziano, please.
Yes, Mr. Toriano.
Thank you, and thank you for reading my letter of today's date regarding the engineering items and some zoning items. And I would like, if it's possible, just to bring up that last rendering that showed the property line. And then I have some other comments, non-engineering related, um, respectively. Agree that you will be sending this to your consultant engineer or village engineer for review, so that is appreciated. So is it possible to bring up that rendering? Uh, this has to do with the property line?
Okay, so as they're bringing up the rendering, do you want to continue?
Yes. So, uh, number one was the driveway. I just wanted to talk about, um, if I may, I'll just go right into the property line matter. The driveway proposed on the application is four feet, uh, from the property line. Ms. Graziano's driveway seems to be equidistant. I therefore suggest that this rendering is not, um, actual. I believe that most of that hillside there, particularly where that purple foliage is located, is on the Graziano property. I would like to see, uh, the red line rendering from the street and maybe a straight line because it is a property line, but I would suggest that this rendering is, um, misleading. And I would also suggest, um, that, that comment that Ms. Graziano's driveway, although it doesn't matter, just by the face of looking in this application would make your driveway, the applicant's driveway illegal as well. So, um, you can't have it both ways. I, I believe this rendering is faulty and I would like them to submit a better rendering. They don't have to do it right now, but a rendering that does show a better straight property line from the curb running straight back to the shed. Again, the shed setback is five feet as well as the, um, as well as the carport shed. And so this property line clearly is at a skew, not depicted properly. I'm going to jump on to some jurisdiction. My understanding, chapter two twenty-seven exists in the Osning village code and applies. Chapter two twenty-seven is entitled Stormwater Management and Erosion and Sediment Control. The village engineer does have jurisdiction. I am suggesting that this is not a voluntary jurisdiction or, and I completely appreciate that the zoning board is recommending that it go to review. But I think that the village code warrants that this, um, application is, does go to engineering, is engineered, it does have to comply with chapter two twenty-seven. Chapter two twenty-seven, by my interpretation, is that when you have a disturbed area of twenty-five hundred square feet or greater, you have to meet certain engineering thresholds. They are adding approximately nine, nineteen hundred square feet of building and impervious area. What also goes into your, into your disturbed area would be your trellis, your construction access road, your drainage facilities, your planters, uh, grading, landscaping. And I believe when you add up all of those disturbances plus the nineteen hundred square feet of disturbed roof area, driveway area, et cetera, you will greatly exceed the twenty-five hundred square feet threshold. And you would see that this is not voluntary by any means and shall, um, be engineered per chapter two twenty-seven of the Osning code. And then with that, um, it was mentioned that the driveway runoff is directly directed out towards the street without mitigation. That is not permitted per any code. Think about Hurricane Ida and where that water is going to go. Also, the runoff from the, in this view, from the, um, carport itself is suggested to go into an existing drainage system. There's no information on that existing drainage system. There's no mitigation proposed. And that water is most likely the most impacted to the Graziano property. It's the closest. You could see the hill right there. Think about seepage, groundwater, icing during the winter months, seeping out onto the Graziano driveway. So that's as much engineering as I'm going to get. I do have some comments with regard to the, um, area variance standards, if I may. Uh, Birch Court is a newer neighborhood of similar homes with similar setbacks and similar open space. Uh, the addition of a carport within five feet of the property line will be out of character with the neighborhood. I want to suggest that the alternative discussed is, is not practical. Um, one of the tests is to discuss, um, you know, are there alternatives? The alternative to separate it from the house, I believe is not, is impractical. How are you going to paint the side of the house? Um, how are you going to address drainage coming up against the house? Very impractical to have a freestanding structure, uh, within feet of a primary structure. I think, um, it is not practical. The variance saw is very, very substantial. Twenty feet is required and five feet is proposed. Uh, we could all do the math there. Um, the addition of the new roof area and previous paving will alter the native, the natural drainage of the neighborhood. Both surface and subsurface water flows will be impacted. I believe that this does have an effect on the environmental nature of the neighborhood. And this application is clearly self-created. The, the need for a third cover or let's say three and a half covered. Um, the, the need for a third covered, or let's say three and a half covered, uh, carport area should be demonstrated. There's a two-car garage, all the neighbors, uh, all the homes in the neighborhood have a two-car garage. When you do the area, this is another car and a half of covered area, we would all like to have that. Uh, but I believe that's a self-created need that the owner has presented on themselves. On balance, uh, when you add a detriment to the neighborhood, um, against the, um, detriment to the neighborhood. Uh, when you take into consideration the aesthetics, um, in close proximity to a neighboring property line here. Uh, the reduction in light and ventilation to the neighborhood and particularly to the neighbor. And drainage considerations, I believe that the detriments, uh, clearly outweigh, um, the, um, positive effects that may, that the owner may have this. Um, and I would say that this application does not meet the standards for the area test for those reasons, uh, that I cited. Um, I did submit the engineering report, which I won't get into, it was read into the record, I, I appreciate that. And look forward to any responses that might come out of it. Thank you very much.
Um, if there is no one else to speak on this particular application tonight, um. And if there's nothing else from the board. I can't see everyone, sorry.
The only thing I'm going to say is what I, I said last time, I don't agree that this should be postponed with the water issue separated from the other issues. I believe that this can be voted on tonight, that's just my opinion.
So, I, I believe that the question would be, um, and this would be to the board members only. Um, there is an engineering report that we have requested to go out to the village engineer that I think should be reviewed and sent back to us. Um, and, uh, we also have an issue with the setback that is not, um, by the zoning sheet not, uh. Uh, is not currently, um, clear. And I believe that that should be corrected so that we have a clear understanding of what we would be voting on to begin with. So, I, I understand, um, Kyle's, uh, I, I under, I, I can understand where Kyle is right now. But I think to, to make it fair to all the board members, I think, um, in my opinion, I think it would be only fair and right to have all of the information. For everyone to be clear about what we are voting on and where we stand. Um, I can clearly hear from the board and I can clearly hear from our land use attorneys and, uh, land use attorney, sorry. Amanda and from our staff, um, uh, as to, as to their thoughts and direction. But that is, you know, my, my thinking and my feeling is that this should be adjourned to next month, but. I would like to hear what the board is saying. Um, in light of all of that, before Bob, um, raises his hand. Um, Amanda, should we adjourn the public hearing again, or do we hear from the board first?
Um, probably a good idea to hear from the board first.
Okay, so, Mr. Derio?
Yes, uh, I agree with our chair. Uh, I think that this, we should wait until our engineers have reviewed all the materials. And so, I would be in favor of postponing this, um, adjourning this until next month. Uh, if they wanted to vote on it tonight, I would be voting no. So, I think it would be better for the applicant if we postponed it till we got more information.
Thank you, Mr. Derio. Um, Mark?
I mean, I, I definitely agree on the, um, the, the engineering aspect, um, I don't know. But the, uh, the clarification as to the setbacks, but, um, I, I at least would need a little bit more information in regards to the engineering about the water because I, I just don't have that. Bilirality with that, so.
What am I missing? George? George, you have to unmute.
Could we maybe unmute him?
Yeah, Jaime, can you unmute him?
Cannot. I can ask him to unmute.
George, can you hear us? Thumbs up or thumbs down?
Can you see his head moving? I can't see him, okay, um.
Well, you still have a quorum.
Yes, uh, and Kyle, um, do you want to weigh in again?
No, I'm good, thank you.
You know, the only thing I would also note, the, the challenge for voting today is you don't have an accurate zoning worksheet.
That's correct.
Not even, you can't really vote on it because you don't know what they're asking for.
Well, yeah, Marlene did point that out.
I did, more than once. So, with that, in, in, in light of those, uh, in light of the, the things that need to be cor, the zoning sheet that needs to be, uh, correct or corrected. Um, and in light of the engineering report, I am, um, asking for a motion to adjourn, um, this application.
Uh, Marlene, do you want to adjourn the public?
Motion to adjourn, the, motion to, uh, adjourn the, um, public hearing.
Thanks.
Yes.
Okay, Mark, your second.
Second, Mark, okay. Um, if there's no objection to adjourning the, um, public hearing, um. Then the public hearing will be adjourned until November. Um, in light of that, I would also, um, ask that I have a motion to adjourn this application until November.
Don't move.
Motion to adjourn, Mark.
So, Mark, um, adjourned, Bob, Derio seconded, we'll just flip it that way for now. Um, and we'll take a roll call vote on this, just to keep it right here.
Perfect, okay, Marlene Cheetham?
Aye.
Kyle Beckley?
Uh, my computer cut out, which motion is this?
This is to adjourn.
Adjourn the application.
Hi.
George Bailing, maybe you can hear us? Uh, okay, um, we're just gonna consider him to not be present for this vote. Yeah, and, uh, Bob Derio?
Aye.
And Mark Gretcheny?
Aye.
Okay, so that's a four-zero vote.
So, the motion to adjourn, um, ZBA 14, 2021 to November, um, to the November meeting, um, motion carried. Thank you all, 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 um, and have a good night. Um, new business of the board is ZBA 16, 2021, um, 17 Pleasantville Road. Um, I believe that that has been adjourned to the November meeting, um. Am I?
I believe you're right because, uh, they didn't, they didn't notice in time for this meeting.
So, um, do we have to, we don't have to put that in the minutes, though, it's just that it's adjourned?
Uh, that's right, you don't have to take a vote on it.
Okay, so that, um, so ZBA 16, 20, um, yeah, 16, 2021, 17 Pleasantville Road, um, has been adjourned to November 2021. Um, on to next is ZBA 17, 2021, which is. 29 Fuller Road, sorry. Michael Banton and Jennifer Gilmore are the owners, if they are present. Hi, Ms. Gilmore, how are you? This applicant is seeking an area variance for rear yard setback.
I'm here, can you hear me?
I can hear you now. So, tell us what you want to do. And is there anyone else here with you? I hear a little voice, but is there anyone else here with you?
Why can't I hear?
We can hear you.
I can't hear anything. Hello?
We can hear you, can you hear us?
Okay, yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, um, is there anyone else with you on this, um, application? Hello?
Ms. Gilmore, do you have any other, um, any other attendees here with you on this application?
Um, no.
Okay, so, and it's, it's all you?
Um, so, basically, when we brought the property, um, there was a deck in the back already there. Um, and I guess the previous owner was wheelchair-bound or someone who, um, lived there or whoever was wheelchair-bound. Because there was actually a wheelchair ramp that led up, so it was huge. Um, so actually, the, but it was unsafe and we looked at the property, we didn't even step back there because it, it didn't look stable. Um, so we said, when, obviously, when we got the house and, and everything, we would take it down and rebuild it back. So, the one that we actually want to build is, might be slightly smaller than what was already there. Um, so, you know, we started, we've been doing this process for a while because I had a planning meeting earlier this year in January. Um, and, you know, the variance had came up and it, it didn't seem like it was going to be necessary. Um, but now several months later now, after all the architect things were submitted for the deck permit and everything, that we build the deck back. Um, we're told we need this variance. Um, so, you know, I'm just trying to go through the motions so we can build it back to the, the deck that we originally saw on the property that, you know. Was one of the major reasons we wanted the house in the first place. Um, so, yeah, we're just, you know, just trying to see if we can get this approved so we can move forward on that part of the project. Um, because we submitted the rear deck permit and then also in this year, um, we also learned about the, the wetlands, so the wetlands is pending as well. Um, so that all of this can kind of be approved in, in one shot so that we can start to move forward.
If I can kind of help out a little bit here, so the, the applicant has admitted, um, kind of a drawing that shows where the, um, where it's going to go. So, they need, uh, to meet a 30-foot variance, or they need to have a 30-foot setback for the rear yard. Uh, they're with the new, uh, deck, which I think is only about like 10 feet deep. It's going to end up being, um, a 16-foot, um, setback. Uh, so they need a 14-foot variance. And after it's built, they'll have to obviously do a as-built survey to make sure that it was built correctly. Um, you know, sometimes we do require that, but for single family, uh, single, uh, family households, we have done this in the past where we don't require a new as-built survey. To be done, uh, in a smaller project like this.
So, can, can I ask, Jaime, can you go back to the picture of the existing building? Okay, so, I'm, I'm believing that that is a door outside, a sliding.
Yeah, yeah, it's like a sliding glass door.
Mm-hmm, with no, no, you know, staircase or anything coming off of it. Um, so there was a deck coming off of there before?
Yes.
Um.
That would have been attached here.
Yeah, that's, that, that was my other observation.
That's what I'm saying, when we got that, the deck was there. And then, you know, we wanted to build it back the right way because it looked like, I don't know, Bob the Builder did it or something, so. Uh, yeah, so, yeah, you could see that it was there and that that sliding door was there that led to a structure that was there, but.
Okay, um, is there any comments from the board? I can't stand this, I can't see everybody, okay? Okay, um, may I have a motion to close the public hearing then?
Don't move.
Bob, Derio opened the motion, is there a second?
Second, Kyle.
Get marker.
Okay, Kyle, Mark. There's been a second, um. All those in favor of opening the public, now, let's do it the other way. Um, by unanimous consent, if there is no objection to opening the public hearing at this time, um, we will open the public hearing. Okay, um, no objection, the public hearing is now open, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this application? Now, okay, um, then with that being said, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Take it, Mark.
By Mr. Derio, seconded by Mr. Gretcheny, um, and, um. By roll call vote, just to keep it clear and clean, um, to close the public hearing.
Okay, um, Marlene Cheetham?
Aye.
Kyle Beckley?
Aye.
George Bailing, in case he can hear us? Okay, Bob Derio?
Aye.
Mark Gretcheny?
Aye.
So, that's a four-zero vote.
Yes, um, public hearing is now closed, um, then it's an area variance, so if, I believe at this. Um, if there's nothing else from the board, let us go through the area variance, um, pass.
Okay. The first factor is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the 14-foot area variance.
Um, I would say no, because there was a deck there prior to this that is actually was, seemed to be larger than the deck that they are proposing to put in. And, um, right now, there is no true egress from that back door, so my answer to that would be no.
I concur.
I concur with Marlene as well.
All right, the next factor is whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance.
I don't think so, I mean, there's, as, as we said, the previous deck was even larger and there's obviously no way to. Egress into, in terms of the backyard right now, so.
I say yes, because you can just put a staircase, even though that wouldn't sway my vote.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mark and that you need to do something because right now it's dangerous. Having a, a doorway to a long drop, so.
Right, so, and then the question would be, even if they put in a staircase, how far out would it reach and would it just end up at the same spot that you would put a deck? So, again, because it would have to go from the second floor down to the ground with so many rise, with so many feet. And I'm not sure that, I think they would still be outs, um, uh, outside of the, um, the approved zoning. And Joe was looking at me.
Just, just, just to let you, just, uh, to let you know, I believe right now that the measurement from the house to the, um, rear yard setback is probably not. Because if, if they need a variance for 14 feet, um, and the deck is only going to be about 10 feet, then they, the house itself is not even compliant. So, whether you put a platform and a staircase, whether you put a deck there, you would need a variance either way.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Joe, that's really helpful. All right, the next, um. Thank you, Jaime, did you pull up the worksheet?
Yes.
That's really helpful, thank you. Um, okay, the next factor is whether the requested area variance is substantial.
Where am I?
Go ahead, Bob.
It's substantial, but I, I don't think it matters. Um, it wouldn't, wouldn't determine me for voting for it.
Okay, um, Mark, did you have something to say also?
I do with Bob, actually, no.
It's substantial, but less substantial than the prior, so again, I agree with Bob.
So, the answer to that would be a substantial, but does not, um. Have a huge impact on, on our thinking with this one.
Okay. Yeah, and, you know, like, does it have impacts on neighbors, impacts on the environment? And that's, that's kind of how to view substantial.
No, in this case, no, it's, it's actually smaller than the deck that was previously installed.
Okay, um, the next factor is whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district.
No, I think it's a smaller deck than was there before. Putting something there makes it safer, uh, it is certainly, um, less of an eyesore, having a deck there than having a door to nowhere, so absolutely not.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
And the last factor is whether the elected. And the last factor is whether the alleged difficulty was self-created.
No, it came that way.
Well, I, I would think the other way, that they took down the existing deck, which then kind of makes it self-created. But if the, the existing, existing deck was unsafe, then the answer to that would be, it was self-created, but it was unnecessary. It was a safety issue that, that.
Yeah, same thing.
That's, that's important.
Yes.
That's it, those are the factors.
Those are the factors, so in light of the factors, I don't, it is, I believe that, you know, we have agreed that, though there are some mitigating circumstances that we all agree that this variant should be approved.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second, Mark Gretschni.
Okay, so motion to approve by Mr. Dorio, seconded by Mr. Gretschni. Roll call vote.
Marlene Cheetham?
Aye.
Kyle Beckley?
Aye.
George Bailing? You can unmute yourself. Maybe you can vote. And if not, we're just happy to have you here. Bob Dorio?
Aye.
And Mark Gretschni?
Aye.
So that's a four zero vote in favor.
Okay, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, build in your new deck and have a good night.
Thank you so much, so I'm assuming I'll get like an email or some sort of correspondence from you guys, or?
So, um, the board will, will, uh, there'll be a resolution of approval prepared and Marlene will then sign that within the next thirty days.
Okay.
That will get filed in the village clerk's office. So you should follow up with either the planning department or the clerk's office within the next month or so to make sure that, you know, you, you get a copy of that.
Okay, all right, thank you so much, and thank you Jaime and Joe, because I know we spoke a lot this year, so thank you for helping me out with all of this.
Bye-bye.
Have a good night, everyone.
Aye.
The best bye-bye I've heard all day.
You said bye, yes. Have a good night.
Good night. Next on our gender, agenda is ZBA eighteen twenty twenty-one, fifty-four Revolutionary Road. Anthony Corda is the owner.
Uh, we have Anthony here. Catherine and Anthony Corda, you, you can speak now.
I'm, hello, you can speak, you can unmute and glad to have you. Please give us your name and your address. Hello?
Hello?
Hi. We are, we are here, we are fifty-four Revolutionary Road.
And state your name for the record.
Anthony Corda.
Kathy Corda.
Is there anyone here with you, Mr. and Mrs. Corda, to speak on behalf of this application?
No.
Okay, then it's, then it's you.
That's us. So, uh, we had put in, in, uh, an above-ground pool in our backyard. And it was wonderful and we, we, we did everything we could do to comply properly and we put in the A-frame, typical ladder, and as we were using the pool, uh, we realized that this is not optimal for a bunch of different reasons, number one, for, it's difficult to get in and out, even if you have regular dexterity. But if you're, if you're an elderly person, or if you're a younger person with limited strength, it's harder to get in and out of the pool and it makes it a lot less enjoyable and a lot less safe. So we, um, we looked at different options and we found a prefabricated deck that we wanted to, uh, add that had stairs both in and out of the pool, made it a lot more user-friendly. And I was not aware, made aware, that, uh, because it's attached to the pool, it follows the same rules. Not just being an egress, but it also has to meet the variance setback, uh, the setback of ten feet, which it would no longer meet because it's five foot wide, so I'm asking for a five-foot, uh, variance. Because we're already exactly ten feet from our property line.
Okay, well, we have heard from the applicant. Is there any discussion from the board?
My drawing isn't as fancy as the earlier drawing, I apologize. But if you scroll down, you've got a good picture of what the deck looks like, it's, it's built for you and you just basically attach it and secure the footings and it becomes, you know, a much better way in and out of the pool.
For an eighty-four-year-old man, it was very difficult to what we tried to do, so we.
It's a much better showing on the tax map as to where it's actually located. Oh, that was a little picture, if you go up a little, that, right there, that's what it will look like at the end of the day almost identically to our backyard.
And is there any discussion from the board?
You can see that's the A-frame staircase and that's the way it's set up right now, it's sideways and I apologize for that. I also have pictures I can share, if it's not clear enough, these actual pictures on the computer to show you the yard itself. But, uh, this particular, area is pretty much exactly where the, where the deck would be going.
Question.
Mr. Dorio?
Yeah, have the neighbors spoke, have you spoken to the neighbors about whether they mind having the deck closer to their house?
Oh, absolutely, they want to put a slide from their house to our pool.
The, the current neighbors that we have, um, they're, they're above us, so there's a cement wall between the two of us. It doesn't show any more or less to them. And to the right and left, there's, there's fencing that, we're totally enclosed in our little area there. So they, they've received letters as well.
Oh, it's not that, I've talked to all of them, I would never do something with, that would, I wouldn't hope they would do anything that would bother me also, so.
Just checking.
No, 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 I agree with you.
Sure, so it sounds like you're making it safer and aesthetically more pleasing.
Yes.
Okay, so, is there, anyone else that would like to speak on this? Kyle, Mark? I don't know if George can hear us still.
No, I'll be on to the five.
I'm feeling bad for George right now.
I know, me too.
Marlene, can I just ask a quick question?
Yes, I'm in.
I think that, um, maybe you already said this, Mr. Corda, and I didn't hear you, but did you already receive HPC approval for this? Am I, am I mixing up my applications? Did you need HPC approval?
I need you to tell me what that acronym stands for. Yes.
Yes, Historic Preservation Commission.
Yes.
Yes.
So you got that?
Yes.
Okay, just so the board knows, that was necessary, they received it.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I didn't add that to this application, I, I'd forgotten to add it, I appreciate it.
Sure, can I go through the steps?
Um, no, we have to open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot, move to open a public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second, Mark Gretschni.
So, there's a motion to open a public hearing by Mr. Dorio, seconded by Mr. Gretschni. If there is no objection to opening the public hearing, then we will, the public hearing will be, will be opened at this time. Since there is no objection, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this, Mr. Mark? I take that as a no? Did he leave us? Okay. Then may I have a motion to close the public hearing, is there anyone?
Second, Mark Gretschni.
Okay, um, roll call vote to close the public hearing.
Okay, Marlene Cheetham?
Aye.
Kyle Beckley?
Aye.
George Bailing, I'm guessing no, Bob Dorio?
Aye.
And Mark Gretschni?
Aye.
Okay, so the public hearing is now closed at this time, let us go through, the area variance test.
Okay, uh, and whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance.
No. No, I think, I think we've already addressed that. Nobody, the neighbors can't see it and it makes it safer for the, the people to use. And it doesn't seem to have any other impact, uh, so I would say no.
I trust the opinion of the Architectural Historic District Review Process and they agreed with it, so I would say no.
That would be my take on it.
I just took that tour last, or two weeks ago.
Okay.
Okay, uh, the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance.
You can't answer that, Mr. Looking at the, the property and the sightlines, um, I believe that, um, this, their deck, which is a, which is a prefab deck, I guess I would call it, um, something that would be built to specs, um, would be easy to show and put in. Would also be safer for family members and safer for the community, so in that, in light of that, I would say no.
I agree with Marlene on that.
Uh, Mark, did you have something that you were going to add?
No, just, I agree, just based on the physical layout, it's hard to see any, any other way of, of going about it.
Okay. All right, the next factor is whether the requested area variance is substantial.
I'd say no, it's getting near, I, I'd, you know, probably over fifty percent, you know, is for me substantial, but I'd say no in this case.
I would agree with Mark.
Okay.
I'm, I'm going to say from the other end that it may be substantial, but I don't believe that, it is, uh, though it may be a little substantial, I don't believe that there's any other means of being able to do this. And, um, and I think that they have looked at every avenue, including going to the Historic Review Board prior to us, so that, um, you know, with their approval, I think that this is, you know, what, what should be done in this case.
Thank you, the next factor is whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district.
I would say.
Sure answer, no.
Unless their neighbors put in a slide, the answer is no.
Well, if we can use the slide, then I would say yes. I'd pay to see Marlene go on a slide from the neighbor's house.
I'd go.
And, uh, lastly, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created.
Oh yeah, they decided to put a pool in, but I, I don't think that matters.
I'm going to say no, the pool was there, but I think that they looked at all the safety issues with the pool and tried to make it better.
I'd say yes, but I don't think it matters in this case. You know, they put in the pool.
Okay.
Okay. So in light of going through the factors, um, I believe that the board has decide, determined that, this application should be approved. With, um, minimal discussion, so, um, with that in mind, may I have a motion to approve this applica, application?
So move, Mark Gretschni.
Second, Bob.
Roll call vote.
Okay, Marlene Cheetham?
Aye.
Kyle Beckley?
Aye.
Bob Dorio?
Aye.
Mark Gretschni?
Aye.
And George Bailing, are you there? Can you?
Come on, George.
Can you give us a thumbs up or a thumbs down?
Poor guy.
Okay, so, uh, we have a four, four in favor of this application.
So, application approved, um, just be careful building the deck and enjoy.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Good night.
Good night.
Good luck, George.
Technology.
He's okay.
He's okay. And lastly, there is some additional business on the board, there's a resolution, for one eleven, one thirteen South Highland Avenue and that, and to the board that involved this, the, um, signs. That was in discussion at our last meeting, um, Amanda, do you want to go over the resolution? I didn't.
You want me, um, can, Jaime, can you pull it? I don't want to, I didn't mean to share my screen, but, um, maybe Jaime, can you pull up the resolution? No?
Yes.
Okay, cool. And it pretty much lays it out right there. So you all, at your last meeting, did vote to deny the variance, the application for an area variance from, from Sparta Apartments LLC, that was for the signs that you had asked to see, you know, them do a sign on either side and they didn't, they decided to go for the area variance with the two signs that were, you know, on either side of the driveway. And, um, then after the fact, there was some discussion with Village Council, Stuart Cahan, as well as Jaime and Joe, uh, when it was realized in the course of drafting the denial, that, um, they had provided a survey with all of their application materials showing that the signs were well within the village's right-of-way. And, um, so at that point, any, really, any improvements being done within the village's right-of-way are out of the ZBA's jurisdiction or are wholly within the Board of Trustees jurisdiction. So that's basically what this resolution makes clear, is that you all did take action on that application, but due to the fact that you didn't have the authority to grant or deny the applicant's application, that denial is null and they will seek, they will likely, I'm, I'm not, I don't really have any, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, but likely they will seek, you know, to figure out what they're going to do with their signs before the Board of Trustees now. So it was really just an oversight, um, that those signs were in the right-of-way. Um, and that you got all the way through that process and so this is just to clarify the record essentially.
All right, so we don't need to vote on this or anything, it's just, it's just for the record.
I think you should vote on it, just, you know, adopt it. Would you like me to read it?
The motion to adopt the resolution as read by Amanda.
Okay, so I'll read it then. So it's a resolution regarding ZBA zero nine dash twenty twenty-one, one thirteen, one eleven dash one thirteen South Highland Avenue. Whereas, honor about May tenth, twenty twenty-one, Sparta Apartments LLC, the applicant, the owner of property located at one eleven dash one thirteen South Highland Avenue, Austining, New York, which is known as the property, submitted an application for an area variance from section two seventy dash twenty-nine, D six A of the, of the two thousand nine zoning law of the Village of Austining, New York, the zoning code, to the Austining Zoning Board of Appeals, the ZBA. The area variance would allow the applicant to maintain two freestanding signs in the front or side yard, identifying the business located, business located therein, where only one is permitted. And whereas, a public hearing was held on July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, and the ZBA continued its discussion of the application at its September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting, at which time the ZBA voted five zero to deny the application. And whereas thereafter, upon consult, upon, oops, upon consult, consultant, that's not right, upon consultation. Right, you should make that edit, upon. Right, should make that edit, upon consultation with Land Use Council, Corporation Council, and staff, it became apparent that the subject signs are located in the village's right-of-way. The ZBA's authority to grant variances does not, does not extend to property located in the right-of-way. Any applicant seeking to use property located in the right-of-way must obtain approval in the form of a license agreement from the Village Board of Trustees. So, resolved, that the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Village of Austining had no authority to grant or deny the applicant, the applicant's application for an area variance. Therefore, the board's decision to deny the application on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one was null. So with that one change, upon consultation, would you like to go ahead and take action?
Yes, mo- motion to accept, as, as read with the change.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, I, I don't know who came in first, Mark?
Take it, Mark, you're winning this one.
Okay, you can put down whichever one you choose. Um, uh, uh, we'll do a roll call vote to keep this, um.
Okay, uh, Marlene Cheetham?
Aye.
Kyle Beckley?
Aye.
George Bailing? Okay, uh, Bob Dario?
Aye.
And Mark Greshny?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried to adopt the, um, resolution, um, uh, nullifying the vote, um, held, uh, regarding, um, of ZBA, I don't remember the numbers, um, but one eleven, one thirteen South Highland Avenue.
Yep, that, that will not happen again.
Okay, no, I won't say that, but it won't happen today, um. Uh, last on the agenda is approval of minutes from the September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting, may I have a motion to adopt those minutes?
So moved.
Um, but that was by Kyle, second, may I have a section?
Second, Mark Greshny.
Okay, um. Roll call vote to adopt the minutes, um.
Marlene, Marlene Cheetham?
Aye.
Kyle Beckley?
Aye.
Bob Dario?
Aye.
And Mark Greshny?
Aye.
Okay, minutes adopted from September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, um, last thing on the agenda is may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Mark Greshny.
Okay, um, I believe that there won't be an objection to this, so if there's no objection to adjourning, um, the most, the meeting will be adjur, adjourned at this time.
Thanks.
No objection, have a good night, all of us.
Good night, everybody. Nice meeting.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.
What?
It's like I'm trying to figure out what's going on with George, I guess if George? He can't hear us at all, I think George is eating his dinner. Alright.
Good night.
Night.